Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our November council meeting. I would like to invite councillor Greg James to do a welcome to country.
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe, and my fellow councillors. Firstly, I pay my respects to our ancestors. I acknowledge our elders, both past, present and emerging. I would like to acknowledge the Yordi Yorda Nations and all its people whose land we meet on today. So, on behalf of the elders council, the 16 family groups and the eight respected tribes, who proudly share in the status of traditional owners of this land, I say a very warm welcome to this wonderful land, country and waterways. Thank you, ma'am.
Very much. The Greater Shepparton City Council acknowledge the Yordi Yorda peoples of the land, which now comprise as Greater Shepparton. The power is fixed to their tribal elders. We celebrate their continuing culture and we acknowledge the memory of their ancestors. Item three, the privacy notice, this public meeting is being streamed live via our Facebook page and made available for public access on our website along with the official minutes of this meeting. Item four, the governance principles. Council considers that the recommendations contained in this agenda gives effect to the overarching governance principles stated in section nine dash two of the Local Government Act 2020. These principles are listed from one to nine as in the agenda. Item five, apologies, we have your received. Item six, declarations of conflict of interest to any councillors which should declare a conflict of interest. Councillor Priestley and councillor Greg James.
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. Item 12.4.
The same, Mayor O'Keeffe, is item 12.5, 12.4 on page 38. The Greater Shepparton College Local Area Traffic Management Study.
Very much. Item seven, confirmation of minutes of the previous meetings if any item is opposed. The council like to move the recommendation. Councillor Dobson.
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. I move that the minutes of the 19th of October 2021 council meeting, 25th of October 2021 additional council meeting and 26th of October 2021 additional council meeting as circulated be confirmed.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second please? Councillor Brophy.
I second that motion.
Thank you very much. All those in favour. Motion carried and opposed. Councillors, on page eight, item 10.1, Community Arts Grants Round One 2021 to 2022. There's also a recommendation on page eight. Would a council like to move a motion? Councillor Summer.
I would like to move the recommendation as a motion on page eight of the agenda with a small change. I would like it to also include, as the applicant, it is the Historical Society of Marutna. As the project, it is history on the walls and the grant awarded to be 2,500 no GST.
Do I have a second now? So we don't have support of that change, councillor Summer? Did any councillor wish to second that motion?
Well, we don't. That's motion.
Miss Mayor, Mayor O'Keeffe, I'd just like to foreshadow an alternate motion.
Point of clarification, we don't have a motion.
We don't have a second, so we don't have a carry. So that motion lapses.
That motion has lapsed. Now go to item page 15, item 11.1. Audit Risk Management Committee Unconfirmed Minutes, page 10 of 2021. Would a council like to move a motion? Councillor Priestley.
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. I would like to move a motion as per the recommendation on page 15 of the agenda.
Do I have a second now? Councillor James. Councillor Priestley, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. So just briefly, this is simply that we're noting the unconfirmed minutes of the Audit Risk Management Committee meeting held on the 8th of September. And note that the minutes are scheduled to be confirmed by the Audit Risk Management Committee on the 10th of November. And if there were any substantive changes to those minutes, they will be reported at the next council meeting. With regard to the minutes that we have confirmed, they had a big lot of financial reports for the year for the 30th of June 2021. And essentially, that's the culmination of all of the financial work for the year. And these reports are now submitted to the Victorian Auditor General and the Minister. There were no other matters that of concern that need to be raised now.
Thank you, councillor James. Would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. Yeah, look, this is a very straightforward procedure. This committee is integral to the organisation and is, you know, is compliant in accordance with the Local Government Act 2020 under the section 53. Unconfirmed minutes from previous meeting to be ratified at the next scheduled council meeting. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? A councillor wish to speak for the motion? We'll now go to the vote. All those in favour. Motion carried and opposed. Councillors, we now go to page 18, item 11.2, the October 2021 Monthly Financial Report. There is also a recommendation on page 18. Would a council like to move a motion please? Councillor Jola.
Thank you. I would like to move the recommendation that the council receive and note October 2021 Monthly Financial Report as a motion.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second now? Councillor Priestley. Councillor Jola, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you very briefly. This is again a regular report that we get on councils' financial performance. Looking at the October report, it is obvious that the key performance indicators are satisfactory and they do not raise any alarm bells. I'm looking at the operating performance where adjusted underlying surplus or deficit as a percentage of underlying revenue. There's a comparison between adopted budget and projected full year budget. So there's a slight improvement in that, which is good. In terms of our financial obligations, that is percentage of loans and borrowings as percent of rates. This is tracking well. It's according to the budget. Our year-to-date actual is 27.75% and compared to the forecast, which was 27.83%. So all good there. Financial health, working capital is current assets as percentage of current liabilities. That is also looking good. There is working capital is higher than the target band of 100 to 200%, but it is a timing issue and it will hopefully align with the projected full year quarter one forecast. A good sort of point to be noted is that our rate debt is, we have three about our rate debt is, we have 329 payment arrangements at this time and it is down from the same time last year in October 2020. Looking at the income statements, there are some unfavorable variances. That is, we have received less income than what we had budgeted for at this point in time. And main reasons are again, once again, similar to our last month's report. Main reasons for this in, for this unfavorable variance includes user charges that have been, that are projecting less than the, to be less than the projected, than the, sorry. I repeat again, user charges which are less than the projected budget. And this unfavorable variance is mostly due to the temporary closures and restricted operations due to COVID-19, as we all know. Operating grants, they have been a slight favorable variance. We have received more than what we, than what was in the adopted budget. And the details are all there in the report. So anyone wants to see where these favorable variances are coming from can have a look at the report. Our expenses, looking at the report, it just shows a small unfavorable variance of 0.1% between the adopted budget and the projected full year quarter one operating expenses. So this is a minor variance there. And finally, our capital works programme, our capital grants are showing unfavorable variance, but there is a favorable variance in our capital expenses, which is mainly due to some of the projects. Yeah, I'll close. I'll end at this note that the details there in the report are giving enough information. And yeah, overall, it's satisfactory.
Thanks. Councillor Priestley, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. Just briefly, councillor Jola has covered things up pretty comprehensively. Just to make the point that COVID continues to have an impact on fees and charges and, you know, generally improving economic conditions, see the reduction in the number of people that are on payment plans, if you like. And then finally, to make the point that council is there, rates notices are out and about and sitting on tables. If you're, if you're looking at that and you're not sure how you're going to pay it, get in touch, have a conversation, council's here to work with you. And, you know, there's certainly the opportunity for you to make an arrangement.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? A councillor wish to speak for the motion? We'll now go to the vote. All those in favour. Motion carried and opposed. Councillors, we now go to page 20, item 11.3, Contracts Awarded Under Delegation from October 2021. There is also a recommendation on page 20. Would a council like to move a motion? Councillor James.
Oh, thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. I'd like to move the recommendation 11.3, Contracts Awarded Under Delegation for October 2021 on page 20.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second now? Councillor Brophy. Councillor James, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. Yeah, there are two significant contractors awarded under delegated authority by the CEO. The first being the construction of stormwater drainage along Carroll Road. And the second is the construction of shared pathways at Botanic Avenue and River Road. There is one contract awarded under delegated authority by a manager and this is for surveying services at the Shepparton Sports Stadium Complex. And there are 10 requests for tenders advertised but not yet awarded. Contracts were evenly spread throughout our region, which is great for, for that diversity in our community. And they include Tatchira, Catandra, Kiella, Kiella West, Marutna, Shepparton and Shepparton East. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, councillor Brophy. Would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. Yes, as councillor James indicated there, you know, it is contracts awarded under the delegation, split into two areas, one that is contracts that are awarded and also ones that are currently under evaluation. And really, there are some very vital works amongst these particular contracts. Whether they be shared pathways, drainage, surveying works, designing or construction, all very, very important. They come up every month and looking through them and we do scrutinise them or give a tick of approval and to move on and get them going.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would a councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Dobson.
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. One particular one which is of an interest to me and to many people in Shepparton is the Botanic Avenue and Riverview Road Shared Pathway. Construction of the shared path, drainage asphalt, et cetera, et cetera. This is the path that will link the existing walkways that are down around the Taylors Estate area and goes right through to Kiella. And it includes, or it will now include when finished, the lovely new bridge over the Broken River. And I would just suggest to people that when that's completed, they take the time to come out and have a look at the Botanic Gardens. It's in full bloom at the moment. The recent rains have done very well. But this scar, this pathway will be a great, will be a great joiner for both central Shepparton and the Kiella area and in particular the Botanic Gardens. Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Saly.
Thanks, Mayor O'Keeffe. Obviously, a couple of projects have been highlighted there, but I think councillors may recall when I spoke very passionately against Carroll Road specifically. And the drainage was one big part of that getting completed first before we could look at moving on to a potential road upgrade. As we know, Carroll Road is surrounded by some really big businesses that have invested a lot of money into their presence in that space there. So really looking forward to that drainage component getting done. And then hopefully next financial year, there'll be some budget allocated for the road upgrade. Thanks.
Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Summer.
Okay, just noting 220, which is a construction. It's great to see that there's three very different footpaths put together in this tender. So we're looking at efficiencies moving forward in the Missing Links Programme. Small steps, but that's something. Then we've got 223, which I'm so excited about. That is pavement curb and channel for Packham Street, which is a former commission area. It's the entrance to our multimillion dollar sports precinct and it's currently very lacking in amenity. So it will become befitting of such a facility when we have people from out of state or even just out of town, even, even the people who live here. They can drive through a beautiful avenue down to that sports stadium and it's going to look fantastic. And fixing up former commission areas also leads to addressing some of the social issues as well that form in those spaces and it can help restore pride in the community. So I think that's one that has a lot of merit and I hope to see more of those in future.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? We'll now go to the vote. All those in favour. Motion carried and opposed. We now go to page 24, item 11.4, 2021, 2022 Christmas and New Year Work Arrangements. There's also a recommendation on page 24. Would a council like to move a motion? Councillor Brophy.
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. I'd like to move the recommendation that the council resolved to close council offices at 3pm on Friday, the 24th of December 2021 and reopen at 11, sorry, at 8:15am on Tuesday, the 4th of January 2022.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second now? Councillor Saly.
I'm happy to second that motion. Thanks, Mayor O'Keeffe.
Thank you very much. Councillor Brophy, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. These are pretty much accepted dates for office closures in and around the municipality. It falls in line with previous years and of course, there will always be emergency provisions for services that ratepayers need to access them during that period of time. In that period of time, there will be certainly councillor engagement. So we're still doing some other activities through that period. But I think we'll all come back freshly, a fresh COVID-adjusted society in 2022. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Saly, would you like to speak to the motion?
Very briefly, councillor Brophy covered it perfectly, but just want to highlight that council, obviously with that emergency contact number, which is the main number, which is the 58329700, is always available for any of those emergency needs. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would a councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Summer.
Keith, pleased to say that it has been an extremely challenging year for all of Australia and all of the world. So I think these holidays are going to be well anticipated. I hope people use the opportunity to really connect with their family because we haven't been able to do that lately. And just loved ones have a wonderful break so you can come back refreshed for a whole new year. It will look very different, hopeful, to the one we've just had.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Spinks.
Thank you. Just to also highlight that this is normally a quite quiet period as everybody else also needs a bit of a break at the Christmas period and spending time with loved ones. But, you know, there are still core services and ways to access council if you need. So it's, while the majority of the council will be enjoying this short break, there will be, you know, for emergency needs, ways that you can contact council and services that will continue throughout it. It's just important to keep in mind that, you know, council doesn't disappear for a week. We just take a break.
Thank you very much. Would any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote. All those in favour. Motion carried and opposed. Councillors, we now go to page 27, item 12.1, Single Use Plastic Free Council Events Policy. There is a recommendation also on page 27. Would a council like to move a motion? Councillor Summer.
I'll move that the council re-adopt the single-use plastic-free council-run events policy as attached to this report.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second now? Councillor Spinks. Councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
Priestley, it's a policy that we've had in place that we were going to transition into over the last 12 months. But as you can imagine, with the COVID restrictions and lockdowns that we've had, events have been very hard to come by. So we haven't really had a chance to road test this policy at all. So we're basically just giving it another, another go and we'll see how we go over the next 12 months and potentially reduce a lot of single-use plastic waste that would certainly just go into our rivers or into our landfill. So, yeah, progressive, sustainable stuff. It's a very small step, but it does show leadership and that we are taking the environment seriously.
Thank you very much. Councillor Spinks, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you. Just to, I suppose, mention, the reality is that, you know, time is running out for single-use plastics. All the evidence shows that it's, they're no good for the planet. And the irony being that as much as time is running out, time isn't running out for all the ones that are already in the environment. They're not going anywhere. So these sort of policies are essential to the good work that we are doing to try and reduce our impact on the planet. And I know that council in many areas is doing this work as well. For example, Kidstown has shown that the costing is the same as single-use plastics to transition away from it. So, you know, the evidence is there, we're doing the work. And this events policy, while already having existed for a period of time and we're simply re-adopting it, it's still those really positive visual strong steps that are going in the right direction. And while I would love to be, I suppose, just fully endorsing this policy, the reality is that COVID interrupted our ability to trial it properly, as councillor Summer said. So it needs another stretch of time to properly understand, you know, any barriers or limitations or just things we need to overcome in really implementing it. But I'm very, very happy to re-adopt it and very glad to see that we are doing it and leading the way in this manner.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would a councillor wish to speak to the motion? We'll now go to the vote. All those in favour. Motion carried and opposed. Councillors, we now go to page 31, item 12.2, Adoption of Amendments, C227, GSHA Anomalies and Amendment. There's a recommendation also on page 31. Would a council like to move a motion? Councillor Saly.
Thanks, Mayor O'Keeffe. I'll move the recommendation as a motion on page 31 of the agenda, item 12.2.
And do I have a second now? Councillor Brophy. Councillor Saly, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thanks, Mayor O'Keeffe. Look, the proposed amendment of C227 is to correct a number of anomalies in the Greater Shepparton Planning Scheme. The corrections will include zoning and overlay mapping errors where land is affected by multiple zones, where the zone is inconsistent with its use or ownership, removing redundant overlay controls from the land that is already developed and exempting a BYO licence from needing a planning permit in the Activity Centre Zone. I will just go through the specific amendments and that's the rezone parts of one Hoskins Street Shepparton from the Public Use Zone for Transport to the Activity Centre Zone Schedule One, rezone part of six Dunan Street Marutna from the Public Use Zone for Transport to the Industrial One Zone, rezone part of 326 to 340 Archer Street Shepparton from the neighbourhood Residential Zone One to the Commercial One Zone and remove the environmental significance overlay from Radio Australia site at 490 Verney Road, Graham Vale and adjacent properties. As well, remove the development plan overlay from multiple properties in Kiella, Marutna, Shepparton and Shepparton North where a development plan has been approved for the land. And lastly, update the schedule to clause 52.27, licence premises to exempt a BYO licence from triggering the need for a planning permit in the Activity Centre Zone. Just a bit of background, the amendments were exhibited from the 19th of August till the 20th of September this year. Six submissions were received by council and all six did not object to or request any changes to the amendment. These items are picked up along the way and when you get enough of them, you bring them to council. So the reality is it's just a bit of a clean-up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Brophy, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. Just briefly, I think councillor Saly certainly summed that up very, very well. It really is an anomalies amendment, administrative planning adjustment. It's interesting that it affects so much of the municipality, yet when exhibited, we only got six submissions back and no objections. So really is, as councillor Saly said, a tidy up just to make sure that we're all well within the Greater Shepparton Planning Scheme and it all fits in nicely.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would a councillor wish to speak to the motion? We'll now go to the vote. All those in favour. Motion carried and opposed. Councillors, we now go to page 35, item 12.3, the Tatchira Park Advisory Committee Membership. There is a recommendation also on page 35. Would a council like to move a motion? Councillor James.
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. Yeah, I'd like to move the recommendation 12.3, Tatchira Park Advisory Committee Membership on page 35. I'll read the recommendation out, Mayor O'Keeffe, because it's really recognition and it does name the list of the committee members that's just been appointed. The recommendation that the council, one, appoint the following community representatives to the Tatchira Park Exhibition and Events Complex Advisory Committee for a period of two years commencing on the 17th of November 2021 and concluding on the 17th of November 2023. The committee members are Debbie Cheeseman, Caroline Colby, Karina Damagesh, Daryl Eaton, Kylie Moberly, Kevin Ryan, Angelo Terazon, David Quick and Carl Walters. And the second part of that recommendation, Mayor O'Keeffe, is number two, formally thank Shaun O'Sheennessy for his significant contribution as he concludes his term on the Tatchira Park Advisory Committee.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second now? Councillor Saly.
Thanks, Mayor O'Keeffe. I'll second that motion.
Councillor James, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. Yeah, this, this committee was appointed by council resolution and Mark's recommendations to the council on procedures, rules and conditions of use for future strategic planning and proposed capital works for the sustainable management of Tatchira Park Exhibition and Events Complex. The previous committee's term appointment has ended. Notification calling for applications for new committee was made in September 2021 by way of public notice. Applicants were required to outline relevant qualifications, skills and experiences to support their applications. Of the nine applicants, seven were existing committee members, including ex-councillor and colourful and passionate Kevin Ryan. So the terms of the reference governing the advisory committee states that the committee must include between five to 10 members representative of the Tatchira community and up to two councillors appointed by resolution of the council. And they are councillor Saly and myself, who proudly sit on that committee. And finally, ma'am, can I just reiterate the second part of that recommendation and say thank you to Shaun O'Sheennessy for his, his term on the previous committee? So thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Councillor Saly, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. Just look, really to back up the comments of councillor James and further acknowledge the great work and commitment that this group of volunteers have done. And again, we'll do moving forward. As councillor James mentioned, we've got the opportunity to sit on this committee and have done so over the past 12 months. It's great to see how passionate the group of individuals are over there. So really looking forward to having another opportunity to work closely with them. Tap Park as an event space has obviously been completely smashed the last two years due to COVID. So fingers crossed, as we progress into the new year, we can really get things going there again and which we all know the benefit financially and socially that Tap Park provides to the whole of Greater Shepparton. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would a councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Summer.
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. Council adds, there is... Thank you, Mary Keefe. Council adds, there is volunteer committees such as this one, and they're just, they're amazing. They're a lifeline into our localities and we couldn't, if we actually resourced all of the things that these committees do, we would be bankrupt. They just offer so much value to council and the broader community. It's astounding. And they should all feel very proud of being such a strong representative group in that committee. Because I have sat in that committee and they, yeah, they are pretty awesome. They work collaboratively. They set very established goals and they have clear ideas on what they want and they work hard to achieve them. And they're almost always mutually beneficial for council and the committees. I just think it's amazing. So congratulations to everyone and well done to Shaun O'Sheennessy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? Just prior to going to the vote, I would also like to thank Shaun O'Sheennessy for the amazing work he has done on the committee. And we know that this committee is so proactive and they do such an amazing job. But thank you, Shaun, for your dedication and commitment to the committee. We'll now go to the vote. For those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. As we now go to page thirty-eight, item twelve point four, the Greater Shepherdham Secondary College Local Area Traffic Management Study. And I do believe we have two councillors that have a conflict of interest that will be put in the waiting room. Would a councillor like to move the motion? Oh, sorry, we're still waiting for one to be removed. There he goes. Would a councillor like to move the motion? Councillor Dobson?
Thank you, Mary Keefe. And I'll read it out. It is lengthy. And the recommendation is that the council note the conclusion of the consultation process associated with the draft Greater Shepherdham Secondary College Local Area Traffic Management Study that extended from the sixth of September two thousand and twenty-one to the fourth of October two thousand and twenty-one. Receive and note the compensation report, the draft Greater Shepherdham Secondary College Local Area Traffic Management Study, summarising and addressing the submissions that were received. Receive and note the Greater Shepherdham Secondary College Local Area Traffic Management, L A T M, study, October two thousand and twenty-one, prepared by One Mile Grid Proprietary Limited. Note that the works contained within the L A T M will be completed before February of twenty twenty-two. And finally, note that the council officers will review and monitor the movement of all modes of traffic, of transport and the parking regime in the areas surrounding the Greater Shepherdham Secondary College within one month of term one of twenty twenty-two.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second there? Councillor Brophy? Councillor Dobson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, thank you, Mary Keefe. The report talks about twenty-seven hundred students rising to three thousand students over the time and three hundred staff. Now, obviously, all of the traffic involved with all of those students and that amount of staff cannot be contained within the site of the Greater Shepherdham Secondary College. And so council were given the task of identifying what additional parking areas that could be used and utilised around the confines of the new school. Some of the scope included identifying parking locations and restrictions, accessible parking bays, drop-off and pick-up locations. And this is the interesting one because there will be more, I suppose, work or busier times in the mornings in some of these areas than in the afternoon. So there was a lot of work around that study. Identify any additional pedestrian crossings required, recommend intersection restrictions, traffic light signalisation, the cost estimates for the proposed works and provide advice on long-term concepts for managing local area traffic. Now, we commissioned One Mile Grid to prepare the plan. And I must say, Mary Keefe, that the councillors received this report a week or so ago. And to a person, I think, we're very impressed with the amount of work that's been done. This is probably one of the more intense and difficult processes that council staff have been asked to be, asked to do or to carry out in recent times. Because whatever they do, wherever the park is outside the school grounds, will impact on some of our residents within that scoped area. The job of our people was to try and minimise those areas and try and have an efficient flow of traffic and try and eliminate disruption to traffic flows. But more importantly, to ensure the safety of students and teachers as they go about their day-to-day business to and fro the school. It's, the education department themselves didn't have a big say in the parking arrangements, so left that to Greater Shepherdham. And I reckon we, I reckon our staff have done a great job. One of the big areas, of course, is Verney Road itself and the intersection with Knight Street and the new proposed roundabout there, the drop-off points, the bus interchange areas and so on. And it's, and we're also asked to have a look at the process as it goes on over the next twelve months to see whether it works. There will be problems, there's no doubt about it. We're going to ask our residents to sit tight with us while we work this out. There's a lot of work to be done in terms of understanding how the whole thing's going to work during the summer periods, during the winter periods. So there's going to be. I'll just be finished. So there's going to be a lot of understanding asked for, but it's the pleasure that I pass that recommendation or offer that recommendation.
Thank you very much. Councillor Brophy, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, Mary Keefe. And I certainly take my hat off to the council staff who work really diligently on this. This is a work in progress. It's the local area traffic management study. And really, they were given the task of putting a square peg in a round hole. It's been sort of thrust upon us to be able to come up with a solution for that. And they've worked really, really hard. And I think that, you know, it's not going to please everybody, but they're so close to the mark with that. What I'm really pleased about is about the review and the monitoring after that. So as I said, it's a work in progress and I really encourage certainly the local residents, but also people who are transiting through there to make contact with council post, you know, the school going back in February, to give us an indication of how it's going. And there will be a certain amount of complaints, I'm sure, but I'd like to see, you know, some of the compliments too, things that are actually working and whether that's regarding the bus or cycling or whether it's actually cars being dropped off with students, et cetera. It is going to be awkward. I mean, you know, just looking at it in regards to the school precinct there. And, you know, you've got Verney Road, Boucha Street, St Brendan's and Notre Dame, and obviously the Greater Shepherdham Secondary College, all within that precinct. And then between the hours of eight and nine and three and four in the afternoon, you know, the traffic in terms of people, if you're looking at just students and teachers alone, is probably about six and a half thousand all up there. That doesn't include residents, doesn't include traders coming from the industrial area or visitors through that particular point. And then you look at the extension down Verney Road, of course, and you've got, you know, the Christian College, you've got the New Anglican College coming online in the near future, G V Grammar, Notre Dame Amas site and also St Luke. So gee, it's going to be a really difficult area and I really applaud the group that's put this together so far. They've done an outstanding job and work still to be done. But we're very pleased with the study that's come about and I'm sure we'll hear a lot more of it over the coming months.
Thank you very much. Would a councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would a councillor wish to speak to the motion? Council Spinks?
Thank you, Mary Keefe. It is not an understatement to say that this has been a massive amount of work and absolutely well done to all of the council staff involved. But I actually think this has been one of the best examples of community consultation that we've had. And I think that speaks as well to how passionate the community is about this particular topic. But what's really happened is we've put it out there, we've had thank you to all of the people who have submitted feedback either by the surveys, phone calls, Zoom sessions, so that we could properly hear the concerns of the local residents and all forms of community that gave feedback. And then we genuinely implemented changes because of that. This was probably an example of saying, right, you know this area, you know what's about to happen. How can we, you know, make, what changes do we need to make? And then we went and did it. And an example of that is that we extended the forty K zone, which just makes sense. It's also the things we didn't do. We haven't put time parking in because we know that residents are going to need to still park their own private vehicles there. And I think it's just such a wonderful example of community consultation done well. And that is a collaboration between council and community. So a massive thank you for that part. I think the reality is, I've been to many schools, you know, schools as a student myself and as a parent, I've never seen a school pickup that is an enjoyable time. So I think that there's nothing really we can do that'll completely eliminate a bit of the struggle of school pickup times and drop-offs. But this is a massive effort that is not only talking about cars, but is also talking about pedestrians and bikes and passing through traffic and the way that people cross roads and, you know, the way that teenagers cross roads sometimes. And there's a lot of different factors at play. And as well as all the people trying to use the roads, it's also the residents in the area trying to use their driveways and the way that they get to work in the morning and come home in the afternoon. So there's just so many different factors at play. And this local area traffic management plan has tried, and I think done very well, at encompassing the majority of these things. But in closing, I think it's important to also realise this is a very fluid plan. We are very aware that there's no real way to know how this is going to play out until school starts at the end of January next year. Those kids turn up to school, we see where the cars are coming from, we see how it plays out and how people use the roads. And we're ready to and prepared to make changes because of that. We are very aware that we're going to need to adapt as things come up and we'll be making the changes as we need to. So I think it just needs a little bit of patience and a little bit of trust that we've got a lot of things right and we've got good people doing the work. And then in January, I hope that first day, you know, in that new building is an absolute blast for all of those students. And I hope that our traffic plan, you know, is everything it needs to be then. So I think it's great. Thank you.
Would any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Summer?
Thank you, Mary Keefe. And well said, everybody. The state government did decide to build a super school in the middle of town and council had no say in that and we had no say in the location. And yet we're supposed to scramble around and try to make access safe. So so much applauding to our staff who have made that unworkable situation somewhat workable. We can breathe a small sigh of relief, but I do wonder in a way whether we have taken this far enough. The state government must have saved a lot of money in amalgamating those schools into one. And we have every right to go to them and say that those profits need to come back to us. That needs to come back to us in infrastructure to make this manageable. And we see in Bendigo and Ballarat that get a lot of state government funding. They have large pedestrian overpasses that go across multi-lane roads. Now, this to me seems like an opportunity for us to lobby for things like that and get those kids right away from traffic because we don't want to see anyone injured or worse. That would be a catastrophic outcome for the community. So I hope we do everything we can to continue lobbying for safe infrastructure around that area. And the saving grace in this motion is point five, that in one month, we'll come back, review what's been happening. And if there is anything unacceptable in our risk matrix, we really need to start stomping down to parliament and telling them that they have created this mess and they need to start putting money in to make it safer. But, you know, our staff getting this far has been phenomenal because I thought it was an impossible task. So well done, Lenys. That's amazing.
Any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Dobbson?
Thank you. Just quickly, yes, I support all the comments that have been made by my fellow councillors. And just want to say that, as we all know, that at the beginning of this project, there were so many questions that were unanswered and people were approaching us, council councillors, and there was a lot of anxiety about the parking arrangements. But of course, not all the details were available at the beginning. And now with this plan, we have seen that council officers have really worked hard. And the project evolved and we had more details, more information available to come up with a plan which is safe and which is looking at all possible aspects and the community consultation that was part of this whole process. So I'm very pleased to see the outcomes of the community consultation process, thanks to everyone who had participated in this process and to those who still feel that their concerns have not been addressed. As it has been said earlier, this is a fluid plan, like this is not something fixed and it's going to be monitored regularly. So we hope that with the cooperation and support of the whole community, we will be able to come with a plan which is, we will be able to implement a more efficient and effective and safe traffic management system around this school. So thank you to everyone and all the best. And yes, we need to continue advocate for safer infrastructure as councillor Summer has mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councillor wish to speak to the motion?
Thanks, Mary Keefe. I will. Might just back up all the comments of my, no, no, look, I obviously echo the comments of my fellow councillors. I frequent that road network every day, so I know firsthand sort of how it was, you know, a couple of years ago before the transition went away from that one school there at Shepherdham High. So it was busy then, absolutely. It was very, very busy. And it's going to be, you know, if it's the same, clearly it's going to be busy, but clearly with the increased numbers and the additional schools that councillor Brophy mentioned down Verney Road, there's going to be a massive increase of traffic and people movement. So again, I just really want to thank the internal council staff for the work they've done, the consideration that they've taken on board from concerned residents. And yes, absolutely, one thing that gives me a little bit of hope is that this is a fluid document and it's clearly going to need to be looked at closely as we progress into the new year. So again, thank you and yeah, back up all the comments that my fellow councillors have mentioned. Thanks.
Very much. Any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? I think everyone has. We will now go to the vote. For those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. Can we please have councillor James and councillor Priestley? As we now go to page forty-nine, item thirteen point one, curbside landfill waste recycling and organic collection policy. There's also a recommendation on page forty-nine. Would a councillor like to move the motion? Councillor Dobson?
Thank you, Mary Keefe. I'll move that the council adopt the revised curbside landfill waste recycling and organics collection policy as attached to this report.
Very much. Do I have a second there? Councillor Priestley? Councillor Dobson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mary Keefe. The origins of this policy was back in two thousand and fifteen. Review was done in two thousand and seventeen and this is the more up-to-date review, the twenty twenty-one. And it focuses on refining the document and clarifying some ongoing rules. It's to provide consistent and contemporary information for the community regarding waste collection and how it's all done. And I must say, the updated policy does not cover the upcoming changes outlined in the Victorian State Government's Recycling Victoria Policy. They are two distinct and different policies. It talks about the council's position regarding access to services by commercial and industrial premises, schools, kindergartens, childcare centres and community groups. And it goes, and it talks about how we want to go about our waste collection and how we manage it. It's very simple. It's just making the policy irrelevant in today's standards. There's not much more that we need to say about it. Thank you, Mary Keefe.
Thank you very much. Councillor Priestley, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thank you, Mary Keefe.
Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Councillor Summer?
Mary Keefe, I'd like to foreshadow a motion. Do I read it, read out what I was going to foreshadow?
Yeah, you can read that.
That the council defer consideration of item thirteen point one to the next, until the next ordinary council meeting.
Do I have a second there from councillor Dobson's?
It's just foreshadowed, so.
Oh, sorry. I did have Jeff to rob. Sorry. Lost track a bit. All right. Would any councillor, sorry, Jeff, would you like to speak to the motion?
He has.
Oh, sorry, councillor Priestley has as well. Would any councillor, I've got lost. Any councillor wish to speak against the motion? We did try both of you and we had the foreshadow motion. Would any councillor wish to speak for the motion? Councillor Allen? Councillor Doolan? You're on mute.
Yep, thanks very much. So, yeah, just a few comments. Obviously, this policy is very operational in nature. The overall objective is to minimise waste going to landfill and provide an effective system of waste collection and to ensure that separation of different. and to ensure that your separation of different types of waste at the source of collection happens. This is a mandatory function of council, waste management, as we all know, roads, rates and rubbish, that's what we are told. Uh, but it's the one that is vital to maintaining high standards of cleanliness and sanitary conditions in the municipality. Uh, just one point that I want to raise is about the is is within the policy, this section number eleven refusal of service and contamination control. So that is, it basically tells what are the steps that council would undertake um, if uh, if residents are not following the um, the bin um, content, that what goes in what bins and and this contamination in recycling and for go bins. I think contamination is a huge issue where materials other than um, substance materials other than organics are placed into a into a mobile organics bin or materials other than recyclables are placed into a into another bin. So uh, council issues warnings for first, second and third instance of bin contamination according to this policy. And on the fourth instance, it deserves the right to suspend the collection and collection of contaminated bin service. Uh, the collection of the contaminated bin will be suspended until the resident or the owner signs a statutory declaration committing to abide by the requirements of correct use. So I think this is a very important point that our community must be aware of and uh, I'm sure that council will uh, take steps to uh, to provide that education, waste education on areas of bin contamination uh, and residence duty is really important to ensure that our municipality is achieving positive outcomes in waste management. It will benefit the environment, it will benefit us economically and contribute towards the health and well-being of our community. So I would just like to strongly recommend that parts of this policy are widely promoted and community um, and communities educated basically on these provisions of the policy. Because we need to ensure that it reaches, this information reaches to our diverse community. We know we have such a diverse community. Um, older people, our newer residents arriving to our region, uh, people with language barriers, all of them, they really need to understand the uh, the all the aspects of this policy and in particular the contamination aspect of the bin use. So I thought I would highlight this point. That's all. Thank you.
Any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Councillor Summer?
Mary Keith, um, I think if we pass this as it is, we're missing opportunity here. Um, the policy, it just builds on the status quo. A lot of us ran on an election platform of delivering hard rubbish services and that's not fully explored here. I feel like it's been a bit rushed. We haven't really had like it's a woeful amount of community, community consultation really when it comes to these things. And we're mostly taking a position of informing the community rather than working with the community. Waste is a significant council activity. It takes up a third of our budget. So it's not a small thing that we just tick off. Um, we do have time to come back to this. Uh, I think it's missing quite a few things, this and the next item. We need far more consultation. Do need to consider the implications of Victorian State Government changes. We need to consider the trends and um, uh, just the impact of COVID nineteen in waste generation and disposal because that has had an impact. The implication of um fortnightly red bin collections in the context of larger families, particularly in our multicultural community. And I might be mixing two items here because I'm speaking to both this one and the next one. But um, reviewing a user payers waste system to avoid unnecessary cost burden on the community and reducing rubbish dumping, further considering innovative options for waste collections, particularly from the door. We have had uh, initiatives sitting in our policy that we are going to pick up hard rubbish collections from people who are disabled and cannot do that on their own. And it has been sitting there for as long as I've been on council and it's never been actioned. We've had tip tickets in there before that were never actioned. I understand all of this is supposed to come back to us for more discussions when we get to a circular waste economy discussion. But there's no guarantee that that's going to be brought up again and that's going to be the appropriate time either. What I'm looking at is a policy and a strategy, a way forward, and it hasn't considered any of those things. We need to go back to the drawing board. We need to ensure we have the right mix of skills and the right information from the people who will be using this service to get outcomes that are going to benefit them as well as the environment. And I'm not seeing that here. Thanks.
Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? Would any councillor wish to the motion? Councillor Spinks?
Thank you, Mary Keith. Um, just to, I do think that um, councillor Summer raises a number of points for us to consider um, just as a whole, but I I wouldn't agree that this is the right place for them. I see this is just the an update of where things are today. This is about, you know, where bins get collected, how you get a replacement, um, if it gets damaged and those sort of details. Um, I agree with councillor Abdullah's points as well about there are many points in there about um, contamination and we certainly got a lot of work to do. And I think that a policy like this has to be um, has to go hand in hand with really strong education and and bringing the community along. It can't just be about um, but not disciplining, but you know, not about the way that we do things wrong. It has to be about how we can better do things right as well. And we do uh, council does that very well, but it's it's all just more. We know things are going in the wrong bins and we know that we need to do more and do better. So I think this policy as just a standard policy gets us up to date with where things are. Um, as councillor Dobson said at the start, it's came around in twenty fifteen, it was reviewed in twenty seventeen, it's now four years later. So it gets us up to where we are today. But I think moving forward, there is a lot more we can think about. Waste is a massive conversation in so many different ways. Um, and you know, it's one of our our core things that everyone in the community knows us for. So there's a lot more conversation to happen, but as this policy stands today, I'm I'm comfortable with where it is. And then we can make sure we're doing that work and having those conversations. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would a councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Dobson, would you like your right of reply? You're on mute.
Thank you, Mary Keith. Whilst I I can hear what councillor Summer is talking about. Um, I think this is uh, that's for another forum. Um, and I don't think your points should be wasted. I think they should be uh, brought up again. This is just an update of a fairly practical uh, policy document. Um, and I I see no reason to have it changed. Thank you, Mary Keith.
Thank you very much. We will now go to the vote. All those in favour? Motion carried. Councillors, we now go to page fifty-two, item thirteen point two, curbside transition plan. There's also a recommendation on page fifty-two. Would a councillor like to move the motion? Councillor Duller?
Thank you. Um, I would like to move this motion, which is uh, different from the one that is printed in the agenda. And the motion says um, that it has two parts. Part number one, council officers present councillors with a revised draft curbside transition plan that outlines a three bin system, including but not limited to moving to a weekly FOGO and alternating fortnightly recycling and residual bin system, to be then presented to the March twenty twenty-two OCM or before for draft endorsement and ensuing community consultation. Part number two is that council officers present councillors with a separate options paper discussing the introduction of the glass bin system and addressing councillors' queries and requests for more information. Thank you.
Do we have a second down? Councillor Priestley? Councillor Duller, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, thank you. Um, as we know that the state government have introduced recycling Victoria policy last year and main objective of this policy is to um, is to basically increase material recovery and reduce waste uh, going to landfill. Under this policy, curbside reforms were also introduced that involve a separate service for collection of glass. Currently, glass is collected in co-mingle recycling bin. So as a part of the state government's curbside reforms and recycling Victoria policy, council was required to prepare a draft and transition plan for submission to Department of Environment, Land, Water and Plan in two thousand and twenty. As a part of this curbside reform, council is also currently working through a collaborative procurement process to tender all curbside services as part of our joint regional um, tender. And it requires to finalise the transition plan. The officer's recommendation uh, that was included in the agenda, it recommended the release of draft transition plan for community consultation. However, this uh, motion uh, directs council to spread the plan in two sections. And part one of the motion is basically about the transition plan for a three bin system based on a strong evidence of uh, reduction of waste going to landfill, um, landfill in neighbouring regional councils uh, that we have seen. And I'm very pleased to see that this is now being considered. And uh, basically, um, the weekly FOGO bin uh, has the capacity to incentivise residents to thoughtfully dispose of organics in the green bin um, uh, and to minimise waste going in the red bin due to its fortnightly collection. So um, so there, there's this information and also other parts of the three bin system. So that's the report that uh, council is, councillors are requesting. And personally, in in the last few years, I have pushed for this change uh, for the FOGO weekly service based on a strong evidence. And I'm very glad that it is being considered now. And in doing so, it is uh, is i- it's it's very much possible that eighty percent recovery target set by the state uh, can be met. Uh, coming to the part, to the second part of the motion, uh, circular economy or waste reduction and recycling bill has been introduced in the parliament. And it managed the implementation of a separate class collection service by twenty twenty-seven. The configuration of the delivery of the service is up to each council and although I strongly support the recycling Victoria policy and I'm very keen to ensure that glass recovery and recycling is maximised, um, but just want to point out that for glass collection, there are three ways, um, either with drop-off points or with the transfer stations, uh, arrangements at transfer stations or curbside bin collection. So.
Would you like an extension?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Great.
Thanks very much. Uh, so quickly coming back to the fourth bin, the reality is that there are many unknowns about the financial viability of rolling out a fourth bin curbside service and uh, and also um, we know that um, there's a plan to roll out a CDS system, which is a container deposit uh, service for glass bottle collections, and it is planned to be rolled out in twenty twenty-three. So uh, my uh, so my concern is that the financial viability of the fourth purple bin service could be impacted by the new CDS service. And there could be um, a large portion of the eligible containers that can be diverted from curbside recycling bins into the CDS system. So um, looking at all of these aspects, it is uh, it is uh, it is very important that uh, all information is considered and we have and we must assess the risk, the risk of the financial viability to run uh, the CDS and fourth last bin simultaneously. And perhaps look at some modelling work that is being done elsewhere. And uh, so yeah, so we need to make sure that we uh, have an informed and then we make an informed and measured decision. Consider all options and modelling and take into account the CDS rollout, uh, once it is rolled out. And to ensure basically that the fourth glass in service is justified because uh, you know, the service is going to be largely paid by councils and in turn ratepayers. Um, so that is something that's our responsibility to our community to closely examine the fourth bin service. Um, and that's why the motion is asking to present a paper on this uh, fourth glass point service, taking into account all the queries from councillors. So that's why I'm, so that's that's all about the motion. Thank you.
Councillor Priestley, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mary Keith, and uh, thank you councillor Abdullah for that uh, very comprehensive summary. Uh, I'll just make a couple of quick points that firstly, I'd like to thank the officers that have prepared the report. Um, ultimately, uh, councillors have had one opportunity to consider this and there's there's a few moving parts and probably uh, relatively late in the day, some other considerations have come to my attention. And really, this is about providing the time and the opportunity to further further explore those issues. Um, as I've said before, uh, everybody's busy in life and I feel concerned about going out to consult on a model that may in fact not be the model that we choose to go with. So I think it's really important that when we consult, we value the public's time and we go out with really what's a a plan that we are all behind. So I'd much rather that we spend a little bit more time having that conversation before we go out and and start discussing something that may not ultimately be where we land. Um, and uh, once we've done that, we're uh, we're in a much better position. And and finally, just to, I guess, make the point as as did councillor Abdullah, that there's a lot of moving parts here. Um, it's not really clear what's going to happen when the container deposit scheme comes in. So how many of our community are going to take up the opportunity to go and get a rebate by keeping the uh, glass bottles aside and and going collecting a few bob? And how many are going to use the conveyor to the bin? Maybe the bins uh, is something that we don't really need. So we will uh, continue to investigate these things, look forward to getting the uh, split reports back and go from there.
Any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would a councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Spinks?
Thank you, Mary Keith. Um, thank you councillor Abdullah for moving this um, alternative motion. I'm I'm very pleased to see it. I think that it is important, as mentioned, to appreciate the work that has gone in by council staff to create um, what has been a very rapidly changing waste space and we are trying to adapt and we are trying to um, stay on top of all of the various moving parts that are coming our way, which is all a great thing because it's us, you know, and the state government adapting to their obligations, you know, under climate actions. But it also means an awful lot of work for local councils. So it's important to respect what effort has come in here. Um, but the reality is with the report that was brought to us, um, I it's it's sort of talking about two different things. And so I'm very pleased to see this alternative motion is addressing those different parts. On the one hand, we are talking about um, changing around our bin system so that we do have a weekly green bin with an alternating fortnightly red and yellow. And that is backed up by data. We are, we know that in municipalities that already do that work, that it it reduces waste to landfill. It's proven that it is a successful model and I'm very excited to see that work progressing. Um, but on the other hand, we have the glass, um, introduction of the glass bin or the discussion around it. And there are just so many, as just as mentioned, so many moving parts when it comes to this discussion. The reality is that the um, CDS scheme, the cash deposits scheme, uh, container deposits scheme will come into play in twenty twenty-three. Um, which is very exciting and I know many community members are looking forward to it. And that is going to pull a lot of glass out of our our system and we just don't know how much will actually be left in. And as it's proposed at the moment, we're talking about one point nine million dollars to um, implement these purple bins and this system, which may, we just don't have the data to support it today, right now, making this decision. Um, and so, you know, we talk about value for money an awful lot and we have to really know our community. Um, this is happening across the state. It is coming, but we have to do it in the smartest, best informed way that we can. Um, and so I think it just needs more discussion, more time, more information to be able to make that decision. Um, but also respecting, there is um, a contribution by state government of five hundred thousand and that is always appreciated. Um, but the reality is a lot of these changes that are coming in, um, local government and ratepayers are having to foot the bill for it. And so we have to be making sure that we're making good decisions, um, smart decisions on behalf of the ratepayers we represent and for local government who is trying to juggle so many different responsibilities and services in the air at the same time. So I very much look forward to the separate reports coming back to continuing to move forward towards a weekly green bin. Um, but also to seeing the glass bin report. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? We now go to the vote. Sorry, and councillor Brophy, did you wish to speak to?
Uh, yes, look, thank you. Thank you, Mary Keith. I just wanted to uh, reiterate, thank you councillor Abdullah and the other speakers. Um, there is a concern though in um, in this particular um, motion that's being put forward that we do have some contractual arrangements. We have some memorandum of understanding that uh, we need to get over the line. And we certainly need the public feedback and I anticipate that there'll be plenty of public feedback. Uh, we are known for uh, rates, roads and rubbish. And this is one of the the three pillars, definitely. And we need a lot of time. And we need a lot of time on this one because you want to get this right. And we need to have maybe some clearer modeling on maybe what it looks like. Sometimes you don't know that until the contracts go out. But we certainly need a little bit more time, whether it's through until March of next year or whether it's earlier than that. But we certainly need a little bit more time to digest it, to work through it and to certainly come up with something that we can give to the public that gives a bit more clarity on what it may look like down the future. But thank you to the other speakers.
Thank you councillor Brophy. Would any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? We're now going to the vote. All those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. Councillors, we now go to page fifty six, item thirteen point three, our sporting future funding round one for twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two. There are recommendations on page fifty six and pages fifty seven. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Brophy?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. I'd like to move the recommendation that's on page fifty six and fifty seven of the agenda, which is our sporting future funding round one. I won't read through them all because I'll speak to it when I get the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second up? Councillor Sally?
Thanks, Mayor O'Keefe. I'll second that motion.
Councillor Brophy, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, this is round one of our sporting future funding for twenty one, twenty two. And so pleased to see that when we look through it, I will mention each of the particular clubs. So the Merican Tennis Club, the Marutina Recreation Reserve Committee for Management, the SS double A Shotgun Club, the Marutina Pass Players and Officials Association, the Merchuses and Bowls Club, the Golden Valley Hockey Association, the Shepparton Swimming Club, the Golden Valley Masters Swimming Club and the Touch Football of Victoria. When you look through that, what a wide range of sports that we're covering, from tennis to shooting to bowls, to hockey, to swimming and to touch football. Fantastic. And across the municipality as well. So we're talking about merchants and we're talking about Marutina, we're talking about Merican. A lot of the M's get involved in there. And very, very pleased to see that a real focus on women and girls and the funding that's coming that particular way to encourage them in that particular sports. This is one of the most terrific grants that go out and it really does hit the grassroots clubs and associations. And I support this wholeheartedly.
Very much, councillor Sally. Would you like to speak to the motion?
Thanks, Mayor O'Keefe. I'll just add a bit more to what councillor Brophy put perfectly across that. And just add to the fact that obviously the last two years have been extremely challenging for so many sporting organisations, if not all of them really. So to be able to offer just over $62,000 across multiple sporting groups right across Greater Shepparton is going to provide no doubt a lifting morale, leading into obviously any new summer or winter sports next year. And also enhance the opportunities for those involved in those sporting groups as well. As I said, it's been a challenging time for so many people. But council under our Sporting Future Fund offer financial grants twice a year. And I often say this when there are grants available and we're sort of passing them tonight in regards that unless you apply, you don't know if you're going to get it. And council staff are there and available to work with you and support you through the application process. So we've got money available, please reach out to the council staff and, you know, give the application process a go. Who knows, you might be successful in getting some funds for your sporting organisation.
Thank you very much. Any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would a councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Summer?
Mayor O'Keefe, I just love our grants. They're sort of a litmus test, you know, there's a litmus test of the priorities of our community. And the uptake of these grants, it's just wonderful to be involved in things that are completed to the benefit of the community that may not have been completed were it not for a council contribution to help incentivize the process. So it's just wonderful. I will however compare the first item we had in this agenda, which was the arts grants. The difference in funding and uptake is quite staggering. We only had less than fifty percent of our allocated budget for the arts grant was spent. So it was less than $5,000 out of a total of $20,000, which is sort of why I tried to push that extra one in there. Because we have a lot of work to do in raising the calibre of all of our grants programmes, including art. So we have SAM and the Creative City Strategy. And I really hope that they achieve their aims or we're potentially looking very high sunk cost. But in sport, we know that we're on a pretty safe field, forgive the pun, because the community love it. We have allocated in total $160,000 towards all these sporting upgrades. And I'm sure the construction industry thanks us as well. Has massive flow on impacts in health and mental health and physical health for our kids. And really does springboard people into professional sports later in life. We've made some amazing collaborations in sport right across regional Victoria. We are positioned as regional leaders in sport in Greater Shepparton. We host events. It's just great to see so many jumping on board and us being the conduit that can help enhance that even further. So well done to the grants team in picking a winner.
Would any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Spinks?
Just briefly, for anybody who's playing along at home and paying, you know, really close attention, we are just noting these ones at this meeting, so the first item. And this one, Adam, I was noting not approving or endorsing. Because the reality is we've actually streamlined, council's streamlined the process to make these grants go through a little bit quicker. So the people applying, the projects that are happening, the various groups that are going to benefit and the community that will benefit from that are able to get through this process a little bit quicker. We know that at times, you know, red tape and slow turning wheels are a thing. But we've tried our very best to get that through a little bit better. And it means that it doesn't have to wait until it gets to a council meeting for us to decide they're great. They're already have been called great and already out there doing the good work. So if you're paying attention to the wording, that's just a little update.
Thank you very much. Would any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? We're now going to the vote. All those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. Councillors, we now go to page sixty six, item fourteen, confidential management reports, no receipt. Item fifteen, documents for signing and sealing, no receipt. Councillor Reports, item sixteen point one. We have a development of a service greater shepherd and smartphone application recommendation. There is also on page sixty six. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Sally?
Thanks, Mayor O'Keefe. Yes, very happy to move the recommendation. Yes, the recommendation as a motion on page sixty six of the agenda, item sixteen point one point one. Development of a service greater shepherd and smartphone application. And I will read out the recommendation that offices provide a detailed report to council within three months, outlining the benefit of developing a smartphone app to offer greater connection with our community and visitors to communicate. The app would include, but not be limited to, what's on, where to eat or shop, parking, transport, reporting issues and payment options, and any other detailed information that would assist our community, such as waste education and local employment.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second up? Councillor Brophy? Councillor Sally, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thanks, Mayor O'Keefe. Look, we have so much information currently available. And my priority is to bring it together in a simple and easy to use smartphone app. If I go through my suggestions, it's getting the basic info in front of people and building from there. We're known as an event city, so being able to showcase what's on is so important to locals and visitors. Obviously, other features on where to eat and shop, our parking app could also be connected to this central point as well. Local transport info with timetables, et cetera, could also be linked. Other features of the app could give you the ability to communicate directly with council on reporting any issues. Also, payment options with paying rates, pet registrations, et cetera. It's also a platform that could share info about waste management and local jobs. The priority is to get all this info and much more into a central point of communication. My main priority is to provide greater connection with our visitors, but most importantly, greater connection with our local community. And I believe this smartphone app will help strengthen that connection. My recommendation is to have this back to us as a group of councillors early next year. And I hope my fellow councillors are as excited as I am to bring this modern form of communication to a reality. Thank you.
Very much, councillor Brophy. Would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. Look, this is the next phase. It really is. And I'm actually surprised that we haven't already had this particular type of technology in place because, you know, most of that information is out there. Yeah, new technology, post COVID, people coming into the area. Now, we need to capture the visitor boom. We also need to capture the city migration to the regional centre boom. And this particular app will absolutely assist in all of that. And look, I want to applaud councillor Sally on this particular initiative. He raised it early in his tenure as a councillor to us. And this detailed report will really flesh out. And I love the wording that it's not limited to. So it really opens the expand of what else we can include in this particular app. Well done councillor Sally. And I look forward in three months' time to seeing what we might come up with. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor James?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. Yes, congratulations to councillor Sally for putting up this exciting proposal for the community. It's a great opportunity to bring people together, I believe. It will provide an opportunity for future highlights through our region too as well. And I'm hoping that the actual app itself will have room for inclusion of our city, how it grows, our region, how it grows itself with cultural tools, points of interest, destinations. I think it's a great initiative and it's very innovative and very, it's just another way of us, you know, technologically advancing our community and how we operate within their community. So I look forward for the future development and the prospects of this really kicking off in our community and our region. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, councillor Jones. Any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Dobson?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. And obviously, congratulations to councillor Sally. It's obviously he's one of the younger members of our group and he's up with everything that is modern. And so he should be. There's only one addition that I think he should put on there or should ask to have put on there and he hasn't thought about it, but I have. Perhaps the results of AFL Grand Finals, you know, may well be an option that you could consider councillor Sally. Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe.
Should keep it local. Would any other councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Summer?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. Well done councillor Sally. I must admit, when I first heard about this pitch way back during the election, my first response was that it sounded very operational and I wasn't sure how you'd proceed with this. But it might have been just a sign of my age and it's a sign of the times that apps are very relevant and that we do need them. I'm actually quite surprised we don't have one already. I think you're an absolute trailblazer because this does set somewhat of a precedent for us to be innovative and force some thought on an issue and potentially come back with some amazing outcomes. So, yeah, it just shows how effective you are at your role to follow through with something that you were talking about during the election, something that you thought would benefit people. And you didn't hesitate in putting it up when you felt it was appropriate and you had enough support. So congratulations. This is a real trailblazing thing to see. So, yeah, awesome. Good work.
Any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Spinks?
I think as well, it's a great representation of the diversity in many ways on our council. And I think that it's sort of fifty fifty, like, great job Shane, awesome, put an app. But also it's twenty twenty one, why don't we have an app? I have an app for my kids' cricket scores and all the different things, like, we haven't got one for council. But I think it's such a wonderful opportunity. And as councillor Sally, you know, put, that it's really limitless. It's about that we can set up historical tours, walking tours, and we can have notifications pop up for when grants become available. And when, you know, a calendar of events that we can tap into our tourism. There's just endless possibilities for this, for not only ways to connect with our local community, but our wider, you know, tourism attraction sort of possibilities. And I think it's just the next step in the way that council can operate and can connect with people. So I think it's a great idea and I'm very excited to hear how it comes back. And I hope that it stays true to your original intention councillor Sally, but also that it reaches all those possibilities that you've outlined and more.
Would any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Priestley?
Just briefly, Mayor O'Keefe, this is more a technical matter because it is important that councillor Sally is able to use his own app. So I've just got a life-size model here of councillor Sally's thumb and a normal thumb. So the buttons will have to be quite large for councillor Sally to be able to use it. So please take that into account.
Would any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? Would any make a trek and device to find the councillors? Councillor Dool?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, well done to councillor Sally. I mean, it's such a timely idea and the way that you have pursued on this one. So all the best. And I'm really looking forward to seeing what we can do with the help of technology and of course, modernise and the organisation, the cool region and cater to the needs of our community. This is a fabulous idea. Well done.
Thank you.
Any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? We're now going to the vote. All those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. Councillors, we now go to page sixty seven, item sixteen point two, council committee reports. We have an item sixteen point two point one, managing sediment in the Barma Millua Reach. And there's a recommendation also on page sixty seven. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor James?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. Yes, I'd like to move the recommendation sixteen point two point one, managing the sediment in the Barma Millua Reach. And the recommendation reads that the council receive and note councillor Dobson's report on the managing sediment in the Barma Millua Reach.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second up? Councillor Priestley? Councillor James, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, ma'am. I'm just a little bit feeling a little bit nauseous of all the accolades shown at councillor Sally in the previous motion, but I'll continue. Thank you. Can I thank councillor Dobson for bringing this to our attention and consideration? This is of interest to our region and also other associated local governments as well. I think what is relevant for our council is to maintain and monitor downstream river flows using our Goulboun River or Kiala in our language. But we need to be aware and conscious of the potential future damage to our waterways from upstream. That's why it's really important. We know from aerial reconnaissance and surveillance and ecological reporting that the erosion of our banks and also the lack of our pristine beaches will diminish if we don't do anything about it. So the presence of sand slugs, which is really of a huge concern, from basically starting from Yarra Wonga right down to the choke. You know, it will destroy our mighty waterways, which are, you know, are the lifeline to everyone and also our beautiful wildlife as well. This report recommends a number of suggested actions in regards to bank protection, sand removal, but also rerouting of the river flow in some cases. You know, as a proud First Nations person with strong connections to our land and our waterways, I fully support any strategy which will, that will improve the quality and flow of, you know, the all-important life-giving waterways. The waterways are our arteries to our, within our systems and are so important. And we really have a responsibility, all of us, to look at improving the waterways, protecting that too as well. So that a number of users within our area and visitors to our town will prosper from that too as well. And in particular, preserve the importance of the Barma choke to continue to be filtered, you know, as it continues to be the filtering system for the Mighty Murray, the Dangala in our language. So I really would recommend any suggestions and the strategies. And the report will actually has provided a number of strategies and fully support this recommendation, Mayor O'Keefe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Priestley, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. Just to speak briefly about, I guess, the report. And I thank councillor Dobson for his work with the Murray Darling Association. There's a fair bit of risk to our community around how this particular issue is resolved. And there's risk to the environment and there's risk to our economy and to the Goulboun River. The choke is the linchpin of the Murray Darling Basin. And unfortunately, the Murray Darling Basin Plan doesn't have a great deal of credibility in our community. So even if there is good science behind this, a lot of the credibility... credibility of the organisation has been burnt locally over time. And there's a great deal of risk that the science behind this particular issue won't be believed by by locals in our community. So it's very important that council as an independent organisation plays a a very sensible, careful and credible role, keeping account of the issues as they're put to us because there are there are really major players that have tens of millions, if not hundreds of millions of dollars at stake around what happens with the Barma choke. And the risk to our own Goulburn River is very, very significant because there'll be huge pressure for this river to make up for what can't make its way through the choke. So I thank councillor Dobson for his ongoing advocacy in that space. And as a community, we really need to watch this particular issue closely.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would a councillor wish to speak to the motion? We're now going to the vote. All those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. We're now going to page sixty nine, item sixteen point three, council activities for October twenty twenty one. There's also a recommendation on page sixty nine. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Brophy?
Thank you, Mary Keith. I've moved the recommendation that the council receive and note the summary of the councillors' community interactions, briefing programme and informal meetings of councillors.
Very much. Do I have a second, Dan? Councillor Spinks? Councillor Brophy, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, Mary Keith. And I know we were just making light of councillor Sally and the the accolades that he's received. But accolades are given and praises given where they're due. And I think, as you've seen throughout this particular meeting, that we've given accolades to councillors. We've given accolades to some of the council staff. We've given, we've mentioned to those on certain committees as well that help us and certainly members of the public who stand up and help us. We are very much, and it's reflective in the the briefing programme and the community interaction that we've had, that we are a respectful community, that we are a vibrant society. We're a very concerned municipality and we have an energy that very few regional centres have. And I think that's very reflective in us councillors turning up and just being there when we needed to be there. And I and I, accolades do come and it's through through just just desserts that they are given.
Councillor Spinks, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you. Yes, just to say how long the list before was and how short this one was, but hopefully how long the next one will be. You know, this entire year has been a roller coaster, to say the least. And I think this particular part of our council meeting each month has really reflected how wild it's been. The last month, you know, was a doozy and I'm so sorry to all of the people and the events that had to be cancelled along the way. Obviously, we still tried to get to a whole lot. But the reality is that the list isn't as long as some previous ones have been. But hopefully, reflecting back on sort of the thirty first of October and what that meant for us to be stepping out of that first stage of lockdown. Hopefully, this month will be a lot bigger. Our calendars are certainly filling up very quickly and it's the end of coming to the end of the year where it's all going to be madness. So I look forward to hopefully that being the last of the very short lists of events and meetings. And that from now on, those lists are a bit longer. Well done to everybody who got through the year that was fingers crossed I haven't jinxed it that we're on the way out. But I'm sure it'll be great. Well done to everybody and all of the events that everybody gets along to as well.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor which to speak against the motion? Would a councillor wish to speak to the motion? We're now going to the vote. All those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. On page seventy one, item seventeen, urgent business not included on the agenda, nil received. And just prior to closing, I would just like to say hopefully next month we will meet face to face, not on Zoom. Let's hope that can happen. I now declare the meeting closed at four thirty five. Thank you very much, everyone.